We're going to do the same thing we've already done. We don't want to do that again.
Call in Metropolis City Council, order please. Monday, May 13th, 2013. Call or roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Here.
Thank you.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for what you have given each and every one here. Dear heavenly Father, we pray that you will be with this meeting that each and every decision we make will be for the better of the community. We pray that you will be with the ones, dear heavenly Father, in our community of the lost loved ones or have ones that are sick, dear heavenly Father, not only be with the sick, but be with the caregivers. Be with our armed service personnel, dear heavenly Father, on foreign ground and here in the United States, guide and direct their lives, bring them safely home to their families. We ask in thy precious name, amen. Need a motion to approve the minutes before 22:13. McManus and Ms. Brown. Call or roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Citizens request, Mr. Chaney did call and canceled his presentation, but I think Lisa has something that she wants to...
I do. I'm here today on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce as president to tell you about a little survey that the Institute for Local Self-Reliance does every year. And in 2012, they gathered data from 2,377 locally owned businesses across 50 states. And about half of those were retail, the rest were service providers, manufacturers, banks, restaurants, things like that. But two-thirds of those businesses had less than, had five or less employees. And their 2012 survey showed that an average of 6.8% increase in their business overall. However, the retailers only showed an increase of 3.7%. But in the communities where they have a buy local first campaign, they showed an increase of 8.6%. And so the Chamber of Commerce has launched a buy local campaign, and so I have presents for you all. We have posters that we are going to saturate our local stores with, and we have buttons for everyone. And I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but if we can just kind of put it out there and everybody sees it, hears it, believes it, then I think it will help our local retailers and all of the rest of our businesses.
And we agree 100%? You know, as I told you earlier, we had some people retire in the last couple, three weeks. So what we actually, you know, everybody's about a clock or whatever, so we actually bought each and every one of them and retired a $100 MetroCard. And they can spend that about any place for anything they want to in the city of the office. So, you know, we encourage everybody, it's a good thing, you know, those MetroBucks. You know, I had some that I'd gotten for, I think I actually won them at a raffle off of something, but actually I used it when I got my landlord serviced for the summer and things like that. I actually used them at Little Tracker. They're good for about, just about every business in the city of the office. So I thought about getting my hair done with it, but...
Wasn't enough money.
Wasn't enough money. Thank you, Ms. Carol. Anyway, Lisa, we do appreciate, you know, what the Chamber does for the city of the office. And, you know, for the ones that actually read the article in the, I mean, in the Duca Sun, Sunday morning, I believe it was, Monday, this morning, and I think it was Sunday morning on the Superman Celebration, like every other event in the city of the office. If we had to pay someone to do the work that it takes to put on one of these campaigns, we would never be able to afford to have anything. Lisa and the ladies and gentlemen in the chamber and the executive board and stuff have met in the last six months, and it's drawing near. And so we're looking forward to the Superman Celebration. There's a lot, there's a lot going on this year, you know, that's extra and stuff like that. So at least we won't be following a flood, we hope, during the celebration. So we do appreciate what you all do.
Mayor, could I say something?
You sure can.
Along with that, last week in my committee, I had brought up about some ladies that walk, they walk every day, they pick up paper and trash along the sidewalks and streets when they're walking. That would be a good campaign. You know, that would help clean up, instead of throwing out, clean it up.
Exactly.
And so that's something to think about, too. But they need the recognition of what they're trying to do. I drove the streets and I can tell the victims. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. First reports, Mayor's report. Motion to accept purchasing new water hose for outdoor fence such as Superman Celebration Blues and Qs. I do have some quotes and things like that. Here's what I am recommending that we do. The hoses that we use now, they are getting in a little bit. We haven't replaced any hoses for a long time. We've repaired what we've got. Replacement costs on the hoses that we're presently using are $103.95 for each 50-foot section. And we actually use, like at the Superman Celebration, we'll use about 1,500 foot. So my suggestion is that we actually break that down. We can do it one or two ways. 30 sections of hose, new hose, is $3,118.50. 10 sections, which would be 500 foot, are $1,039.50. And I would either make a suggestion or recommendation, that way either buy 10 sections or 15 sections and cut that half, and then we'll replace more hoses next year rather than to replace them all at one time.
That's the same hose we're using now?
Same type, yes.
I'll make a motion that we buy 10 sections.
10 sections at $1,039.50. Motion made by Mr. Mizel, second by Mr. McManus, to authorize JK to order 10 sections, which would be 500 foot at that cost. And then, of course, there's always some connections and fittings and stuff like that that we actually have to use. We won't have to have near that many for the Blues and Qs, but we will have to have a certain amount of them. And then next year, we'll buy smaller. Call or roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Next item. Motion to accept the purchase of a new R-U's welder. I think the used welder that we were looking at was, I think that finally decided, $1,300. Now, a new one with the, everything that goes with it is, I think, $3,100. And I'll leave that up to the, I think we can get by with the used one, but I'll leave it up to the city council.
How many hours does it have now, Mayor?
Ms. Daughtry, I think it has 223 hours.
Is this Chris's welder?
Yes.
He told me 2,600 hours.
2,600.
Yeah, okay. It's an 8,000.
It is an 8,000, yes. Which, that is about a $3,500 welder, something like that, maybe four. And as far as I know, there's nothing wrong with that, except it does need one seal put in it, which he said he would put that in, so. I do, I do think we need to do something to maintain our own equipment where we're not having to go out and use somebody else's.
The difference was pretty much over?
Yes, there was about $900 difference. But, I mean, we probably have the money and the budget for equipment, if you'd rather buy the new one. I think the list price of the new one was $32,999, but they actually said that they'd give a $200 discount if we do it right away, which would bring it back down to about $3,100.
Is that local, Mayor?
No, it's not. It's actually Tractor Supply, but it was about $1,000 difference. Because we only have one place here that actually can do it, but...
We don't have, we have no welders at all that belong.
It's not like that, no.
Oh, we've got some wire welders.
Yeah.
And it's not capable of building heavy equipment.
Well, and this, this can go up to, you know, to work on the beds of the trucks. If you remember, we actually built two beds, maybe three, actually on the flatbed trucks that we bought that didn't have any beds. And Chris actually constructed all that steelwork and everything with that welder there.
This welder be portable?
It is portable. And so the new one is, too.
Yeah.
How old is this, you know, the year when they purchased it?
Well, with that many hours, it's...
He has one.
Yeah.
I mean, is he going to replace this himself so that he will have a new one, Chris does?
He gonna buy him a new one.
Sure. Okay, so he's not going out of the welding business?
No, 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 no.
Because he's still probably going to be our local go-to guy a lot of times.
He does all of our welding now.
Right.
But he actually, I mean, he does it on our time. But I'm open to everyone, we just need to get a welder.
So a new one is 31?
I think 31, maybe a little change, Jerry, but that's brand new and has everything that we need to make it portable and take it where we need to.
It's got a lot of Rs on it.
Yeah.
I think, I suggest go ahead and get a new one if we get it at that price.
Okay, you want to make that motion to that?
I'll make a second on that.
Motion made by Mr. Mizel and second by Mr. Carol.
From Tractor Supply, correct?
Yes, I think, yeah. And that is in the range of 31 and something. All right, we do have a motion, we do have a second. Call or roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Next item. Acknowledgement of resignation of Dwayne Kurzine, which is, I think Dwayne's last day is the 17th, which will be Friday. Dwayne's been, you know, a valuable employee to us on our line crew. He actually is taking a position with a smaller municipality, I believe in Kansas. So he will be relocating. We want to wish him the best of luck. And he's going to, he'll be, he'll be missed. I mean, Dwayne brought a lot of knowledge, and every time we lose someone that's got you 15, or 20, or 30 years of experience and stuff like that, it takes, well, it'll take 13 years to put somebody back in that position that will have the same amount of what goes on in the city of Metropolis. We're fortunate, we have two young linemen that are doing very good, they're going through their steps very readily and doing a great job. They just got back from another week's stay and stuff like that. We actually get written reports back, all of them were well up above in their classes. So it's something that, you know, it just takes time to build back to, so. But we are going to have to replace, you know, some linemen. We went back today and looked through the records and stuff like that. We can't possibly make it on less than four or five linemen. It's virtually impossible. I mean, it's, right now, we have a little bit of a kickback. We can use a couple of people that's actually bit out, that's still a trained lineman. But the only trouble with that is, and Mr. Abel and I were talking about today, in our emergency, that's fine to use them as ground men and stuff like that to aid somebody that's in the bucket and stuff like that, but you, we certainly don't want to put those guys as not being linemen every day and jeopardize their safety and stuff and something that they're not used to doing. So we'll have to move on from there, but we did want to acknowledge Dwayne and tell him how much we do appreciate what he has done for the city of Metropolis. Next item. Motion to accept closure of Market Street from Metropolis Superman Square through 8th Street from Wednesday at 5:00 p.m., June the 6th, 2013, to Monday, June the 10th, 2013, for the annual Superman Celebration.
I'll make a second.
Now, those streets, just for updates, we actually put down on Monday, but they will be, the streets will be put back together, cleaned, swept by 8:00 Monday morning. You'll never know, we had an event up there, so we'll just come in early. Most of the time, I've left it up to the men. Tell me, would you rather do it on Sunday evening, would you rather do it on Monday morning? They're going to have to come to work on Monday anyway, so they can get up a couple hours early and get it done, and that way they have their Sundays off. So that's probably the way we'll do it. We do have a motion, we do have a second. Call or roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Next item, most of yous already know the special announcement. I'm going to let Chris take care of the special announcement. She's, she's dressed for a party, and we're going to let her have a party.
We applied for an OSLAD grant. It's a very difficult grant process. And we asked for funds to build a new bathhouse to go along with our existing swimming pool. The swimming pool's in good shape, the bathhouse is not. And we got that grant. The announcement was made Saturday, and it's $331,000 toward, toward building a new bathhouse. This type of grant is one where the city will be responsible for paying upfront, and we will receive half. So they're, they're saying that the building cost will be like $662,000 to build a new bathhouse. The upside to this is, this new bathhouse will be ADA compliant, it will be safe. In the 11 years that I've been down there, I've made notes on what needs to be changed safety-wise, to make it more family-friendly, to make it compliant. And we were fortunate enough that the state of Illinois agreed with us, and I'm thrilled. I am thrilled.
Is this your first time to apply for that?
For that grant, yes. I've gotten others, but that's the first one, that's the first time we've gotten an OSLAD grant. It's the first time we've gotten an OSLAD grant. They're very difficult, so, yes.
I'm looking forward for a meeting for architect on drawings.
Okay.
Well, Chris didn't say anything about it, but actually, there was a lot of hard work, a lot of, Cheryl helped Chris write the grant, and between the two of them, they actually took a trip to plead their case in Springfield. And I think they got it, because after all the crying and screaming and stuff like that, I mean, they had to get it to them, get them out of town. But that is a very, very hard grant, and we did get the notification by mail today that it is official and we did receive it. And unfortunately, we would have liked to have gone. They actually had two announcements, one in Peoria and one in Decatur. And when they first called me last week, I wanted to go for the announcement and stuff like that. And then they emailed me back with an invitation, and it was Saturday at 11:00. This was Thursday they called me. And we had already made arrangements with FEMA to be here for flood victims. And as much as Chris and I would have liked to have gone, right now, that right there was top priority for us, was get that done. So unfortunately, we didn't get to go, so, but we're going to get it anyway. Corporate council report. Do you have any name?
No, not the highest section.
We're going to have the lowest section. Next committee report, Mr. Barfield, Waterlight Street.
This is from the May the 1st meeting, and we have the following items to bring before the council. I will make a motion to accept the aerial mapping with pictometry in the amount of $58,079.50. Out of this, I believe our share is $19,349, if I'm correct.
That's right. It's to be split three ways.
Three ways.
And it's to be paid over a three-year period.
That's true.
I'll second your motion.
We do have a motion, we do have a second. Discussion? Call or roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
I will make a motion to accept the mosquito spraying and the hiring of Keith Stokes and Greg Bradford, sharing the honors, the hours of spray for the same cost of last year's rate of pay. Contract?
Second. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Midnight. Call or roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
I will make the motion to accept an agreement with PDC Laboratories for drinking water testing service for a three-year contract in the amount of $3,930.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Mizel. Call or roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
This item was presented by HMG Engineers on our sewer system project, and we take a motion to approve the proceedings with low interest loan application to IEPA as presented by HGM, HMG Engineers for Sewer System Projects. There was quite discussion on this, and, you know, any questions will be forthcoming, I'm sure.
A lot of our questions come...
We do have a...
I will make that motion.
And a second by Mr. Mizel. Discussion?
I'm waiting on the discussions to come later.
Okay. We do have a motion by Mr. Barfield, and we do have a second by Mr. Mizel. Call or roll, please.
That's the reason why I made a statement last week in our meetings that, you know, considering this loan application, which I think it's, at this time, to get a low, a low-interest loan is, is the time to do it. But at the same time, we need to curb what we can in spending and take, just spend initial things for the city to take care of the city, and that's the reason why I voted the way that I did on that.
Well, the low interest rate would be around 2%, that's what...
Yeah, that's what I said.
Right, I mean, you can't, you can't beat that. But there are a few deficiencies in it, too. I mean, as the sewer rates will have to go up somewhat on the water.
We do have a motion, we do have a second. Any other discussion? Call or roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Thank you, then. Close our report.
Next item on the Indian Territory. Police and fire report, Mr. Carroll.
Yes, Mayor. I make a motion to approve the matching funds for the small equipment grant in the amount of $386.28 for the firefighters.
Motion made by Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. McManus. Discussion?
I just want to clarify, it's not really a matching grant, $386 is the part that we have to kick in. The grand total of that project is $26,386.28. The grant was for $26,000, so the way it's worded is just a little bit confusing. I didn't really care about, knew what we were spending. We're going to have to spend the $26,386. The paperwork has been submitted, and it's $26,000 forthcoming from the state. It could take up to 120 days to be deposited.
We want to strike the match part of it and just say it's fun?
It could be just excess funds.
A match is fine, it doesn't, I mean, match is whatever you put in, local match. It's the same way with the airport, we only put 5% or 2% in. I just wondered about where we were spending the $26,000 along with it. We're getting the $26,000 back.
Let's just use that as... Any other questions? Call or roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Next motion, and we'll keep Chief Morris here to explain it after we get a second on it, hopefully. Motion to approve matching funds for assistance to firefighters grant, AFG, in the amount of $3,413, not to exceed $3,500.
Motion made by Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. McManus.
The exact amount of our part of that is $34.88.
$3,488.
Total grant was for, total project is $69,776, with a federal share of $66,288.
All right. We do have a motion, we do have a second, and we have clarification. Call or roll, please.
Barfield, Brown, Carol, Daughtry, McManus, Midnight, and Mizel.
Thank you, Chief Morris. An act of code, my report, Mayor.
Department heads.
All right?
Ms. Chris? Chief? Assi?
Just a reminder, this is National Police Officers Memorial Week. Wednesday is actually National Police Officers Memorial Day to honor the officers that have died in the line of duty.
Chief Morris?
Just want to let everybody know, too, we got, our Department of Natural Resources Forestry Grant was approved, so I'll need a police and fire committee meeting sometime to discuss that. That was $19,850.
to discuss that, but that was nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, and then that's a fifty-fifty grant, which makes our share nine thousand nine hundred and twenty thousand.
Do we have a time limit on that, do we need to do it next week, or?
Uh, sooner would be better, yes.
Okay, you'll take care of that.
How's the construction coming along in the new building, Chief?
They put two doors up today, they should finish the doors tomorrow, and then, I believe, Wednesday, I believe, the city is supposed to set the electric meter and the service into the building, and then they'll start wiring it, so.
Be hot, okay.
We should hope to have it done within a week or so.
Are you doing your own wiring?
As of right now.
Yes, okay.
We're gonna look and see, we, if we've got the money left over, depending on how things work out, we may end up trying to contract that out, just if it gets done. Uh, it's not a big wiring job, but right now, we're testing the hiders like crazy, so.
I understand. Thank you.
Do you have any meetings scheduled for next week, Mayor?
We've got a, uh, a bunch of FEMA meetings, uh, uh, I know we got four on Monday. Tricia, we got any FEMA meetings on Tuesday?
Uh, hold on, next week, I think we, be one second, I'll tell you. I know we have them this Friday and this.
We got them Friday and Monday, I know.
Yeah, hold on, just one second, I'll tell you. Okay, we got, on Monday, we do not have any on Tuesday, May twenty-first.
We can either have it there or in the week following.
I'll check, be better if I check with you tomorrow in your office and we make a decision. Did all these FEMA meetings on?
All day Tuesday's free, Tuesday afternoon's free, and all day Thursday's free.
And then we have some, uh.
That's next week, not this week.
Right.
We made it a Waterlight Street Committee meeting, too, that day, yes, intended, though, it's nothing permanent.
Okay. Let me, uh, check, let me check in the morning and see what, uh, I, I think it's all right, I may, I may have a lunch thing. Uh, I might be a little late, uh.
Yeah, that was Tuesday night.
Yeah.
Okay.
I gotta have a meeting at, uh, maybe I can get it a little bit earlier, where I can be back by one, I, I, it'd be close.
I'll check with you tomorrow, about two o'clock.
All right, and you wanted a Waterlight?
Maybe, yes, possible.
We'll just put it down, put a question mark.
Okay.
Okay.
Do, do we have any updates from HMG coming up? I would have an update from your department.
Yeah, um, actually, I have one thing to add today, the AMRET from Phase One for the long-term control plan, they have, uh, mobilized their start work, they'll actually cut, uh, saw cut the streets probably next week, so they are bringing equipment in and getting moved into a red house.
It's next week?
They'll start cutting pavement next week, yeah.
All right, did they move in, I think today was the day we're going to, you know, activate.
There's pipe and.
Okay.
Some equipment down there.
Of course.
They're gonna be moving stuff all week, actually.
You, you got equipment now on, between the first and second on your ride, haven't you?
Yeah.
Any other departments, Christie, you have anything to trade about? Uh, old business? New business?
There's a Chappelle's Air Traffic Commission meeting tomorrow, eleven o'clock, up here in the chambers, right in here.
Miscellaneous reports. Financial report, payment of salaries, payroll, and contract bills. Motion by Mr. Mizell, second by Mr. McManus. Call or roll, please.
Barco?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Payment of miscellaneous bills. I'll make that motion, second. Motion made by Mr. Mizell, second by Mr. McManus. Call or roll, please.
Barco?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.